Turner County Board of Education meeting for July ten. Here's your agenda. You can pause the video if you need to look at it a little bit more detail. The board did meet beginning at five thirty to hold a hearing on the budget. Very few people were here, nobody from the public except one person who was applied for a job. Nobody spoke one way or another about the budget. The board is supposed to meet, well this board is supposed to discuss as you saw there on the agenda, in the library contribution. At the last meeting, the board had conditioned their contribution to the library, increasing that amount on whether or not cities and the county commission also increase their amount. At the budget hearing on the county commission meeting, the commissioners did not agree to increase the library's budget, but said they might revisit it later. They were somewhat reluctant to increase it because last year when the library asked for an increase and received it, they said that increase would allow them to hire a full-time library manager, and that did not happen. Alright.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We'll go ahead and get started with our regular board meeting for June tenth, two thousand twenty-four. If anyone wants to take stamp and attend, please. To the board. Lord, thank you for this time to become a greater Lord. This is Turner County School, this is a church that has to do this, you know, we got our thoughts, we got our actions, we're doing everything we do to be blessed and we're gonna pray.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
I pledge allegiance to the board of adjutants, to Mr. Paul. Thank you to Ms. Kendrick, all in favor? Yes. Can't be any of the public participation. Public participation this evening. Item number five is items requiring board action as recommended by the superintendent. Have an approval of minutes.
Make a motion to approve of minutes.
Motion for Ms. Blue. Thank you to Ms. Kendrick, all in favor?
Do you have one question? See, you want something highlighted?
It was just a note, Mr. Goodman has actually in the minutes needs it mentioned, pull this up, that he is the facilitator for the program that y'all approved. It just wasn't mentioned that he was actually the program facilitator for that.
Okay. Approval of April two thousand twenty-four, final, just like.
Make a motion.
Ms. Blue. All in favor? Approval of this last budget.
Next.
Thank you to Ms. Kendrick. Ms. Blue, all in favor? Yes. Approval of can you plan for ancillations? Thank you to Mr. Paul. Just like, Ms. Blue, all in favor? Yes. Approval of HR recommendations, we do have some changes since the recent board meeting. Get the information on those, did you show us?
I do. For the board's request, they wanted a little bit more information about each one of the boards, if you didn't have that background information, for me to just tell you how to make your decisions. The first recommendation, Carter's gonna be a middle school teacher, certified, will be teaching science, actually has a background in instruction, and is a teacher at the Georgia Cyber Padman recently. Douglas, lunchroom worker, has worked at Head Start in the food service area at Head Start. And then McCoy, also a lunchroom worker, has worked in several spots in our area, so also has experience in working in that area. The last one, which was added last minute, I apologize for that, Rockwell is gonna be a sixth and seventh grade parent for special ed. And if you remember, he was actually on last month's board agenda, we did, with his dad, we got him back. Who's, who's, Rockwell?
Jermaine Rockwell.
It's not my name. It's probably. Okay. So going to be back next month, I guess, very position. But that's. Yeah, what, what's her name? Jermaine Rockwell. It was on last, it was on the color board meeting, it was the board meeting. Jermaine Rockwell, sixth and seventh grade parent, for special ed. That's all we have as far as recommendations.
Make a motion to approve any new changes.
Ms. Paul, approval of HR recommendations with changes?
Yeah.
Just do it. Okay, we've got one released.
Yeah, that was just recommendations, I didn't have questions. Reservations, we did have one as well, that was sixth and seventh. And then we did have one request to be released from contract, and that was some strikes.
Okay.
Have the motion from Mr. Paul, in a second, from Mr. Brown, do a further discussion? All in favor? Adoption of FY twenty-five final budget. Have a motion?
Make a motion.
So, Ms. Kendrick, in a second, from Mr. Paul, all in favor? Make a proposal for a management, for a budget ready for next year. Approval of local board training, training plan for FY twenty-five. Ms. Kendrick. Ms. Blue, all in favor? Approval of Turner County Board of Education fiscal agent for FY twenty-five family connection program. Motion for Mr. Paul, in a second, Ms. Blue, all in favor? Approval of student handbook and code of conduct. Did I ask for voting that? Okay, I'm sorry.
On the one before.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I kind of lost what I was saying, I apologize. Approval of student handbook and code of conduct, have a motion. Motion from Mr. Brown, all in favor? Ms. Blue, all in favor? Yes. Approval of Victoria Evans Memorial Library budget contribution.
Make a motion that the title is.
Do you hear from?
I do have some additional information.
Okay.
Not necessarily about anyone else who doesn't count, if the commissioners make decisions, and I think I mentioned in the fellow corp section that there were several still that need to have that discussion. I did do a little research in our Risa area. There are twelve school systems in our Risa area, and I wanted to know what other city systems were doing with their local libraries, to see how we compare, and so that was something that had been in discussion among the superintendents. And I found out that the twelve school districts, Turner, right now is the third highest in donations to the local library. T F obviously is the highest at twenty-five thousand, and then you got fifty, twelve thousand seven hundred, and then third highest of ten thousand right now, so it would actually be the second highest if we increased dollars to thirteen. So I didn't know if that might be something that the board might. That's still a new decision.
Do you have a motion to take it?
We have a motion forward to taking the approval of Victoria Evans' library, library budget contribution. Now, a second from, from Mr. Brown, all in favor? Yes. Approval of purchase of a new vehicle.
This is for the third, this is the third of eight, sir.
Motion for Ms. Kendrick.
See, I see there's two different calls now, which one are you?
It's the GMC, it's the most recent one we gave. The GMC is the most recent one we gave, now is the one from.
The one with forty-one thousand.
Forty-one thousand nine hundred eighty-nine dollars, I think that was it.
It's just the GMC, was the one I lost.
GMC is forty-three thousand seven hundred and sixty-five.
And so it's the plug from Berkshire, yes. I have a motion for Ms. Kendrick, in a second, from Ms. Blue, do a further discussion? All in favor? I don't know if six is review of employee.
I do think we have some copies in mind. Again, I'll review it, because I wonder how I would handle the code of conduct. You'll have it available in the next thirty days, we're just laying it on the table for due review, and we will have the vote under the July, so for you. We did clarify the importance of teachers being present at school, this way that absenteeism is high, higher than it should be, and that's something that schools have all identified, and that was discussed in detail at our state board session we had, and we had a title on the two weeks ago. So that is something you'll see several sections in there. And since the schools went out, have a new cell phone policy for the students, we felt that it's important to have the teachers follow suit, and to be good role models, and be good leaders in that area, where they're not having their cell phones out, because obviously they could have them on the person, they just won't have them out like it's the norm right now. When it comes to computer technology, cell phones, earbuds, we'll see several sections that pertain to that, just good use of materials, make sure you're using them appropriately. The importance of having equipment and discharges available to use in the responsibility. Dress code is something that the board has brought to our attention, how important the dress code is to be a student, so we did make some specific changes there, just making sure that it was clear, as to what should and should not be worn. We did add agreement, that was not something that was at the center, that was not something that was stressed at all, so we did add the one day agreement, really with all employees. In addition to obviously then being able to take more time, use their sick days in the year. Grade, we were a little bit more specific in what that should look like, so that employees would have the expectation, what grades should be taken in, and within what timeframe, so that parents would be able to know and look out for within that campus, and what their students should be, should be getting each week. I would say you'll see a theme throughout on stability and professionalism, and the importance of parent relations, we see several items, always refer back to that, and the importance of us having good community relationships with all of our parents and stakeholders. So those are the highlights. If you have any other questions, you know, just tell each other to reach out. That's all, it's my turn.
Okay, thank you. Item number seven is information items for the board, instruction update?
Yes, as I mentioned last week, it's very exciting, we had our last overseas meeting, and we found out that all of these sections for phases, eleven hundred, twelve hundred, thirteen hundred, we'll have all of the concrete work by the end of this month, so that's just in about two more weeks. You'll see there's even more steel, more beams to the panel, we can send it through our last week, so that's exciting. And they are available for us to come around eleven tomorrow, with your hard hats and your clothes, shoes, and we can take you to our site, get more information, and ask specific questions about progress and next steps, and see for yourself, it's in there.
The next item is the interview reports.
The principals have updated their interview reports, impact checks, and so I'll let Mr. Turner lead those efforts, and he'll come up and present data in detail, some specifics, so I have to give you that data for you.
Before we get started, okay, to tell you a little bit about the process that we have, something that goes through every year, with our teams, in school, brought their teams, and it's really nice, but we did see some posters on the wall, that's just some of the data, and things that goes that we want to pursue next year. We're proud of you guys, I know that they have a very tough job running, but we're gonna get the job done, we got some things that they definitely need to work on, we did hear a lot of attendance, that's not only students, that staff too, because we know how to school and stay hard. With that being said, I'm gonna bring up our elementary school principal, Sims, and go over there.
Good evening, everybody. So if we look through here, unless we've been working hard, we know some things that we, areas that we need to work on, so these were our two targets that we needed in our strategic plan, the increase in each one of our subgroups by thirty-six percent. As you can see, IREDA really helped us out, it really helped our kids improve in placement, and that means if our kids starting in fourth grade, by the time you got to the end of the year, a lot of them had moved up second, third grade, and that really helps us out, and help close the gap and learn. We had fifty-three students in fifth grade that exceeded or met their Lexile targets, which is pretty good, but our main focus is next year's literacy in ELA, and that's what we're gonna be focused on, that's why we're actually have that HMH that comes in for to help us with our tier one overall instruction. Math, same thing, with forty-three percent, it helps us out with IREDA. We don't have our scores for math at this time, it will be brought to us in September, so we'll find out what we look like in September, and what we'll still focus on, and still increase by thirty-six percent at the end of the year. This is our behavior, this is last year, we basically had a hundred and sixty-six referrals at that time, took me a little time to get used to referrals at elementary school, what we should do for certain behaviors, so you can see this year, maybe go to the next one, we went down to a hundred and twelve referrals, and so we found out sometimes a little timeout, a little talking to, a little conference with our parents and stuff, it gets our kids back in order, and they get back to class, and you don't have to worry about going through that referral process and keeping them out of class. Attendance, a lot of this is going, kind of shock you. Up here, this is our attendance for our teachers, as you can look there, kindergarten, you see at one fourteen, we addressed that situation, so hopefully that number will be coming down drastically next year. Support staff, and then second grade, attendance, we just overall, we need our teachers there, and this also affects our overall learning of our students, and it affects our climate, just getting kids used to being in school, teachers being in a routine, it just keeps us going when we're there, and the students are there at the same time to help them learn as we go throughout the year. Students, they may not say it, but they used to have in their teaching day, and when it's not there, it creates a, it creates a disconnect or break in that learning, so we don't focus on that. We got some things in place to kind of get our teachers there, and send it to stuff to get them in school as much as possible. Another one of these, just got the phone with Ms. Johnson, we're gonna try to work on it, this is a focus that I'm gonna have to take control of on into next year, that I will be in the meetings, I will make sure these things are being done, we'll make sure we get the paperwork and the process completed, so we can file those chin, and those reports we need to, with the judge, to make sure we're holding notes, the parents are kind of, for that elementary school. Our students depend on their parents to give them to school, and a lot of times if they don't give them to school, kids want to come to school, but if the parents are not bringing them there, they won't make it there. And anytime if y'all have any questions, just talk. How great is we looking at this year, we added nineteen gifted students this year, five hundred and five, about five hundred and ninety students, more than to the next grade. We did have eleven students that were retained, sixteen students that were placed, you know, those students are in summer school, so even though we placed them, we put them in summer school to help them out moving into next year. We got a hundred and three students right now currently enrolled in summer school, so we got them in there, learning as much as possible, and sixty-eight of our students will be taking GMAT retests, that's only in ELA sessions two and three, so we'll be taking that on June, excuse me, June the twenty-fourth, and then we'll do retest on the twenty-fifth, so. And there's basically a state report that came out, and these students are on that state report that recommends that these kids retest the GMAT test, and we'll continue to do that even next year. Assessment data, as you look here, this is ELA, we have a lot of work, especially with third grade, getting them there, we have a lot of ones there that we need to get up. Now, we did have a lot of growth in those areas, but it just wasn't coming out of the ones, so you know, they increased, but we need to get them out there, and that's also for fourth grade and fifth grade, but like I said, fifth grade was a bright spot, you can see there was an increase of kids really on grade level compared to the year before, and also in their other areas there, so we have a foundation that we can build upon, and we're gonna continue to keep building on that. I think that HMH coming in, having our tier one instruction, is gonna really help us out if we move forward, something that teachers can rely on, and have a direct process to get everything done, and make sure areas of need are addressed. As we look at math, we only can look at last year, because math's course is not in, so I won't stay on this slide too long here, but we'll get that updated as needed. Fifth grade science, you can see there were a little bit of, there was some improvement there, but we still have ways to go, working on our science, we're gonna look at some other resources and things that we can use to get our kids up on science in fifth grade, but like I say, there's some improvement moving forward, but we're gonna try to make sure we can turn that around and get it even better moving into next year. As you look here, we'll get this retest data back after we get through testing retest, and we'll see how our students perform, once we get those scores back, and probably should be right before the summer end, we should get those back, and then time to get updated as they. As you look here, this is our subgroups, and I just look at, let's look at those percentages of kids black, white, multiracial, and Hispanic, how they scored in ones, twos, and threes going across them. You can see, we see those single digits over here, four, we're gonna try to make sure we get those into double digits moving into next year, with what we have. Alright, next year, so, pretty good review, we think, we like the fact that sixty-three percent of our fifth graders are on grade level or exceeding in ELA, so that's a good start as they move over to middle school. IREDA really helped us out this year, like I say, closing those gaps, I think it'll continue to help close those gaps going into next year. Really happy that we got the HMH, we're gonna focus on that, I think, we were talking today, me and Ms. Woffler was talking, just getting rid of all those extra things that mess with learning, and we're just focusing on HMH, and making it simplified, so we know exactly what the teachers should be doing in class, so I think that's gonna help us out big time not using all those other resources. The HMH, I think, IREDA is the main focus moving forward, I think that's gonna help us out big time. Roy Reeder's was implemented last year, that was a free grant that we had, went through very good, and this year we'll continue that, you know, incorporate strategy groups. Our community events went very well, moving night and the stars, some things you went to, cookies with salmon, our scenes that we did in Christmas and in the spring, they are very popular, we have a big turnout for the spring scene that we had here in the gym, and I think we're just gonna grow on that as we go. And one of the most important things, the last one, we had no school emergency or safety events this year, so we're gonna hope that we keep that going, moving into next year, and hopefully address all those safety issues. And then we look ahead, like I say, implementation of HMH, increase the teacher and student attendance, because that is now on our new strategic plan, increasing that, not only are we gonna try to increase by three to six percent in math in ELA, but if we increase that and reduce the total number of days missed by students and teachers, we'll see those numbers go up. We're gonna implement tier two and tier three behavior interventions, try to increase the recognition of teachers and students as they progress through the year, increase teacher support and introduce instruction, we got two academic coaches that draw well, I'm aware of, we got one for math, and we got one for ELA, so that should help us out tremendously going into next year with that support. And me personally, increasing teacher feedback and support with the tight wing walk-throughs and our teach observations moving into next year. Do we have any questions?
The only question I have, or can we hit this on hard time?
Yes, ma'am, that's right, I'll make sure I was gonna ask that today.
I think we don't.
We'll make sure next time we do that, I'll make sure I hand one to you first, for each and every one here, before we get started.
But I want that too.
Okay. Alright, I'll be followed by my middle school, Mr. West. Take care.
Good evening, everybody. Alright, so, a summary of our actual plan for this, just completed school year, so with content mastery, we're happy to say that sixth and eighth grade, ELA, our level ones decreased and our writing portion increased, so we were proud of our writing scores. Fifty-eight percent of our eighth graders are reading on grade level, and eighth grade science level ones decreased and levels two, three, and four increased, so that's something we're working on, and that's, that's significant to us because we actually had our eighth grade science teacher go out on alternative league, and we had an in-house person step up, take on that role, and he did a great job, so science did pretty well. As far as attendance goes, we shared the district protocol for parents, students, and staff, you know, and we formed an attendance team, and I'll hit on this a little bit more later, but we still have a lot of work to do with our attendance, you know, and I will say that as far as faculty attendance, that has been addressed, and it will continue to be addressed until we get things the way we'd like to see it. Behavior, we put some interventions in place to help with chronic issues, we also started doing some positive behavior referrals, instead of just doing some negative, you know, they displaced negative behavior, and so we have behavior referrals, we decided, you know what, let's try to incorporate some positive referrals, so we had some of our teachers and faculty members had an opportunity to start recognizing our students who display positive behavior consistently, but also trying to redirect our children who have displayed negative behavior, so we're trying to do a few things different, and you'll see some more of that coming up soon. So, as you can see here, you know, we started the year, and then when we hit fall, we started seeing some negative behaviors taking place, right? So we began to put those interventions in place and to try to do some things differently. So we began to put those interventions in place and to try to do some things differently, to try to decrease that, and it did for the most part. And then you see springtime, it starts, you know, they start getting hot up, you know, in March, April, so. Um, but we did try to put some things in place to help alleviate that. This is uh referrals by behavior. And uh, I'd say a lot of it is, is classroom management, to be quite honest with you. And we will, we have good things in place, we have put some, you know, professional learning together. We have sent some teachers who are new to education, but who are also new to us and, you know, just various aspects of of, you know, what they're doing. We have helped them, you know, provide the support, to eliminate that. And again, here's our attendance. I was uh very proud of the seventh grade faculty. They could get a great job in here. And I can, I can tell you that uh in that particular grade level, tardies almost went to nonexistent almost, so that was very good. So, they really worked hard and and tried to be here. Um, eighth grade, you'll, you'll see an alternative league there. Um, and then you got various other, you know, professional learning and other things. But I can assure you that the attendance issues that need to be addressed have been and will continue to be addressed, you know. And then, so our student attendance ended up with about two hundred and twenty-seven students. So we had about forty-two percent, ninety-five students who missed five or fewer days. Uh, six to fifteen days, we had about ninety-eight students, forty-three percent. And then certainly, we've got to work on this. Um, I can assure you, this will go down next year, this coming year, that will go down. So we've got about thirty-four students who missed sixteen plus days. So, all students, you know, we, we, all students were promoted to the next grade level. However, we have eighth grade children who are in school, they're currently enrolled in summer school. And they are there with a specific purpose, they are being remediated. Uh, we've got some very good teachers that are serving our children for summer school. Uh, and you know, the people that are, that are serving our children are new to us, new to our children, new to our district. But they are already showing, like, I, I just think they're gonna be fantastic, so I think they might have a great year. But, but they've come in, they're taking over, they're doing a great job. And again, what I like about those twenty-five children who are being remediated is um, they, they have the, the month of June to get this remediation. Whereas before, the previous years, what we had done was, you know, we were, we got the scores back. And we would hurry up and, you know, break down the data and try to get them organized so we can try to mediate quickly, and it was kind of rushed. And I do feel like our children will, are better served because they have until the last week of June to retake this ELA portion of the milestones. So, I think that's really gonna help. All right, so on the left-hand side, you can see last year's data, twenty-three. And on the right-hand side, you can see this year's data, twenty-four. So, we're pretty happy, if you look at sixth grade ELA, the number of children was roughly the same, they're just one off. We had thirty-nine ones last year, this year we went down to thirty. It's not where we want to be, but it's better. Um, and then level twos, we had more level twos, so that's good, we had three more. And we had more level threes, level fours, we'd love to see it more there, especially with our, you know, hardcore children, but. Um, and then I'm gonna jump to eighth grade, and I'll come back to seventh grade in just a second. If you look at eighth grade, one thing that is positive about eighth grade this year is we had a teacher teaching eighth grade ELA who had never, ever taught ELA. Um, veteran teacher who has lots of experience, however, she did not have ELA experience. And if you look, the level ones decreased. Level twos, um, level threes went up, level fours went up. So, not, not bad, you know, considered, are we where we want to be? No, but we're, we did, we did pretty good. In seventh grade, um not quite as positive, but changes have been made, and I think it's starting to look different next year. Okay, uh, the changes have been made. All right, and of course, we can show you last year's math data, but we don't have it back this year. So, hopefully we'll have that around fall sometime or another. Science, um same number of children both years. Our level ones decreased, level twos increased, level threes increased, level fours increased. Is it where we want to be? No, but it's certainly better, it's certainly better. And that is what I was, you know, speaking on earlier about, we had our main science teacher, she now on alternative league, and we had a person step up, and he did a great job. He really did. And social studies, so it was a tough year for social studies. We were cut some staff from last school year, and so uh, our, all of our homeroom teachers had to step up and take on social studies as well as their regular primary subject. So, I, I feel like we didn't get to serve our children the way they deserved and the way we hoped for. So, the numbers, you know, we, it's roughly about the same or a little less, so we didn't get much growth there like we were hoping for. But, um, this year, this, um, you know, this raise has been helping us tremendously so far, and we've been able to add on some staff. And I really think it's gonna make a huge positive difference in our school this coming year. So now, we, we have been able to add a fourth teacher, you know, four homeroom teachers. And so, they will be able to have a dedicated social studies teacher this year, this coming year. We will retake the last week in June, we've got it set up for the twenty-fourth and the twenty-fifth. For our eighth grade children to retake the ELA portion of milestones, G mass. So we'll have that data for you, send us, we'll give those reports back. And here's our G mass subgroup data. Kind of speaks for itself, and obviously, we wanna get this up, get that down. And that's what we're, that's what we're gonna shoot for, that's what we're gonna strive for. So, as we look in the year review, we think about content mastery, we think about vertical planning. You know, something I've said about, you know, elementary versus middle school, elementary, I think what's great for them is they have other teachers in a lot of cases that are teaching the same things to them. And they have someone to rely on and someone to feed off of, and that's nice. At the middle school, they are the only one who teaches what they teach, you know, in that grade level. So, that makes it a little bit tough, but we have some vertical planning going on, collaborative planning. And what's great about this upcoming year again, um, we were able to hire some academic coaches for the middle school. And they're already doing a tremendous job, like I said. So I think, you know, as they provide their support for the teachers and then that trip down to the students, this is gonna look really good. Um, you know, we, we're having student data conferences. Um, I think that's tremendous, I think it's very important to conference me for students consistently and regularly. So that they know where they are, and so that they know what their goals are and where they stand, and they can keep climbing. Um, of course, we use data analysis to help with our content, you know, to help with all of our progress. Attendance, so our attendance team was formed, we put the district prot- protocol, protocols were shared with students, parents, and staff. And of course, attendance concerns have been shared, so one thing, again, having a few more hands-on resources, having those staff members there this coming year to help us. The attendance is, is going to certainly be better. Our, our team, we're gonna have a stronger team, attendance team, we're gonna change the way we do things, we're gonna change the way we hold people accountable. And hold these children accountable and hold these parents accountable. So, that's gonna be, that's gonna be a good thing. Um, with behavior, of course, you know, we try to use resup for our new teachers to provide them with, with support for uh classroom management. And again, I know I mentioned this earlier, we started having some positive nodes, positive referrals instead of the negative. We're just trying to incorporate some other things and try to boost, you know, the morale of the children, you know. And so, as we look ahead, so I mentioned earlier, two academic coaches coming in, that's gonna be tremendous for us. That's gonna really, really help our, our faculty and staff, and it's gonna, I believe it's gonna help all of us come together, you know, in a positive way. Uh, we're, we've added a teacher for grade level, that's gonna make our classes a little bit smaller, it's gonna take some of that load off of our teachers, make them a little more comfortable. Um, of course, we're gonna have professional learning in place, lots more PLs this year. Uh, we're able to do that now, and we're gonna put that in place. Um, we're gonna use our programs with fidelity, uh, we have new curriculums, new things in place. Um, another thing that I think is important is new teacher mentorship. So, you know, we, we talk about, we strive for recruiting great teachers. But what's just as important is, once you get them in here, is retain them and keep them. And, and build them each year, and just kind of grow them, and and so that's, that's one thing we want to do, you know, and I'll tell y'all, I, we assigned mentors to our new teachers this year. And, and they, they did a good job, they did. Can we do more and can we be a little more efficient? Yes. But it was a tough year, you know, we were smaller, had same number of children, it, it was a little tough. So, I really think that new teacher mentorship will be in a much better place this year. And then obviously, we're gonna continue our tight and wave walkthroughs and, and providing feedback. So that we can all grow together and our teachers can grow and learn. Attendance team, that's gonna continue, nothing's changed about from this school year to the, to the upcoming school year, nothing's, nothing's changed. We, we've got a lot of growing to do. So obviously, we're gonna be using the checkmate for tardies, we're gonna change uh the way we take our attendance, we're gonna change that protocol. That's gonna be done a little bit different this year, and that, that will make a huge difference, it will make a difference. Um, we are going to have monthly recognition for our outstanding students. So one thing I did this year was, um I, I did not, ad- admittedly, I didn't do it as consistently as I hoped. But I would go through and I wanted to recognize and reward our teachers for the hard work and their efforts and their attendance. But what I'm gonna do next year is I want to make it official and, and really make it a thing every month. And reward our children and reward our staff for doing good things, and trying to make things better, and help boost that morale and climb.
All right, good evening again. As you know, my favorite saying at the high school is take the stability, you know, we have a lot of teachers that work really hard to keep the, keep the, keep the ball moving at our, at the high school. Uh, with that being said, our action plan summary, and I kind of based this off our school improvement plan. So our content mastery with a brand-new teacher, you know, straight from, I mean, she came from the workforce, straight in the education, she increased about a hundred and forty percent. And I thought that was tremendous based on our schools and like, you know, that was a high, you know, for my, for my, for my school improvement plan on content mastery. Uh, other school improvement plan was based on pathways and end up, end up, end up pathway assessments, and a hundred percent of our students passed in, in the nursing room. And they're officially seeing that, and this woman white does a phenomenal job, showing those students how to be good nurses, because they're gonna take care of this one. So, uh, so our kudos to that department and making sure our healthcare students get ready. Also with attendance, uh, I know it's not a lot, but at zero to five day range, we increased that by four percent. Uh, students know that if they have three or less accesses, they get a chance to exempt fine exams, so they come to school more. And I have those individual conversations with them about attendance and coming to school, and, and uh, they're buying into it, they email us, they, they tell us what's going on. And I really appreciate them being a lot more responsible and willing to come to school. As far as our behavior, uh, this is something that I give kudos to restored practice. Uh, we did a good job of incorporating restored practice from the twenty-two, twenty-three school year to this past year. And as you've seen, it cut our uh referrals in half. And that's just having those conversations with our young adults about, you know, relationships, making sure they communicate with people, whether they like it or not the correct way. And it's working, I, I gotta say it's working, it's cutting down fights, it's cutting down on just overall behavior development. Now, are we perfect? Absolutely not, but those students are actually working towards being young adults and being productive citizens one day. So, you'll see a kind of breakdown with referrals by events. Uh, of course, that disordered condom is kind of big when this kind of, this disordered condom is kind of mixed, mixed of different things that happen in the building. So it was an influx of disordered condom, and also just referrals by month, and I think the middle school never hit, hit, hit on the head. As you get into that springtime, they're just like spring chickens, things happen. But uh, we're gonna do a better job of putting our thing on it, putting our thumb on it, and actually trying to reduce our referrals on the second half of the year, that's what I'm saying. I apologize if this is not updated, this is through February, so I will be this updated to give you a true indicator of what that looks like, because I want to get a report from Gosh to see what that looks like, just to hone in on departments. Because a lot of, a lot of times when you look at teacher attendance, it's a direct relationship with your achievement. So this is not updated, but I plan on updating it by tomorrow when I get that proper. Uh, here, here's a highlight that we talked about earlier, that attendance from year to year. Um, you know, from twenty-two to twenty-three to this past year, you know, about the same amount of students give or take, but uh, but we had that plus four percent. And uh, and that zero to five days of coming to school. And also in that back end, we see the sixteen-plus days, primarily this is seniors, you know, they got their senior skip days, they got their way of doing things. So I, I notice an influx of seniors missing sixteen more days. But uh, sitting in the courtroom this year and hearing that truth here from the, uh, from this heard, just heard, we're gonna fix that. We're gonna hold students accountable, we're gonna hold parents accountable, for students coming to school, so you should see a reduction in those percentages over attendance. As far as grades, this is something I'm kind of proud of, I know it's not a lot, but basically two hundred and seventy-seven of my students came to school and passed out of course. Uh, which that's reducing, you know, during uh credit repair, credit recovery during the summer. Uh, seven of one of our students were eligible for credit repair, and that's kind of split probably thirty-five to thirty-five per semester, second semester. But uh, students are coming in, you know, getting those credits because they tend to feel it when they get to eleventh grade. Not in tenth grade, they, they do jump through some pitfalls and not doing what they're supposed to do. But as they get into eleventh, fourth grade, and they start seeing the work they put into it, they can see the light at the end of the tunnel, that gets better. But we do work with during the summer on edge annuity, but to recover that credit, we did have eleven students to retake the course. And in order to retake the course, you gotta have a fifty-five or less average in class. But if you have a fifty-five or better average, you, you get a chance to repair and recover it. But going into next year, now that we passed COVID, we're gonna, we're gonna look at it, it's gonna be sixty to sixty-nine, uh, where you can get opportunity to repair and recover it. But uh, but I, but I think this is a terrific idea by young adults doing the right thing, and passing the courses, so they can learn. As far as assessment data, um, you know, I did, what, what more than this data in high school, but it's important, I don't want to say you tell you it's not important. We did make some gains, uh, but, but I'm not, I'm not happy with the gains. So we're making some changes as it relates to teachers teaching the ELC course in areas. We got, we had one teacher teaching ELC to a course in areas for, for three or four years, I think. We did grow that capacity in math, having two teachers teaching the uh, the ELC in math. But next year, we're gonna have multiple teachers teaching in one particular content, all three teachers are gonna teach it, but the other three countries, we're gonna have at least two. Because, you know, like, uh, I think, uh, Mr. West said, it pays, teachers need somebody to play off of, teachers need to plan with people that are teaching the same content areas. So we plan on growing that capacity, but looking at the data, first name, we did have an influx of students that took the AM, uh, AM Lit, uh, ELC. Uh, we had eighty last year, but, but this year we have a hundred and one students taking it. And you see the level ones are pretty much the same, I know it's a few more students, but it's pretty much the same, but, but we gotta grow that capacity. We did have some gains in uh level three, uh, we increased level two by one student, and we increased level three by four students. And not quite to that level four, but I think that the work we're gonna do with literacy and our, uh, feeder, feeder grades, and I think it's gonna pay big dividends in, in the high school. And also, what you hear on back end, uh, having that extra coach in ELA and social studies, honing in on those six teachers will also help us to pass the exam. Uh, actually, we don't have that data yet, but I'm interested to see what it looks like, because we had two teachers, like I said earlier, to teach that ELC test area, so uh, I'm gonna be happy to see that, except for my told, to see if we can grow, we can have it now. Uh, biology, I talked about that earlier, roughly the same amount of kids took it from year to year, eighty-three last year, eighty-two this year. Uh, we still need to, you know, decrease the level ones, but you see the difference in level ones. Uh, you're talking fifty-eight students from last year, now forty-five this year. Uh, not, not, no gains in level twos, but you see level threes went tremendously with a brand-new teacher, you know, coming in from the workforce, uh, the non-traditional ride. And also she had two level fours, so, so kudos to her and the work she done, and she had a lot of drawbacks this year, but she was still able to push forward and better relationship with students and you know. Uh, US history, um, I, I thought we should have did better, you know, knowing that the test was kind of honing in on particular areas that we specifically targeted with our students. Uh, but we did have an influx of students from, from last year to this year that took the ELC US history. Uh, but those level ones are still not where we want them to be, uh, we're pretty much them to be, uh, we're pretty much, uh, even with level twos, uh, level threes went up two students, and we had one level four. But, but that U S history test, y'all, it's not hard, but it's specific with dates and timelines and, and charts and graphs, so we got a new guy coming in from veterans, uh, I forgot about coaches, he wanted to teach U S history. Uh, spoke to a couple colleagues of peers of veterans, and he does a good job of teaching that, so I, I knew we should see gains, uh, with Coach Kyle, with teaching our U S history convention. Here's our subgroup with our literacy, once again, this is a, a district initiative, and I, and I know this is a, a growing time in our black subgroup, as you see, more than fifty percent, you gotta, you gotta target, you can do some work with them, and grow our literacy capacity, and you'll see pretty much, you know, different, different break, breakdown of our subgroup. Uh, C T A and College of Career Academy, this is the big push in Georgia, you guys, this is where we're going. Uh, Ms. Jordan has done a phenomenal job of pushing this initiative, ensuring that our students are, are using U Science data to, to inform them of, of some post-secondary opportunities. So a hundred percent of our students at Turner County High School, uh, completely U Science, where it's, it's a bunch of brain games and, and all kind of curriculum toward things that kind of interest them. Uh, some students are amazed when they see the breakdown of that U Science data, because they may go in saying, I want to be a policeman, but it comes out, you know, they're probably leaning toward being a teacher, if they stick to what we got to be going. So it's, and you'll see the next couple slides, kind of the breakdown of the U Science system, and that's where we're going. Uh, as far as the student interest, teach them, believe it or not, teach them, it's them wanting the interest of students, because they may go in with a mind and say, hey, I want to do this, but, you know, teaching kind of plays a part when you get those, uh, final results. Uh, the second area is human resources, uh, arts and media, which is, you know, there's social media stuff that, you know, people pushing, a lot of kids lean that way in law, law, and public safety. So what we're gonna do, we're gonna take this down, I'll be talking to Ms. Jordan about it, we're gonna talk to, uh, C T A teachers that we have, we're also gonna grow our capacity for southern region of A VAC to make sure we hone in and give these students, you know, internships where they can be successful, uh, in, in the areas post-secondary. And also aptitude, you know, those are areas that came out on aptitude, banks, manufacturing, health sciences, distribution logistics, architecture, construction, and arts and media. So, so once again, using this data to show students real-time what it looks like in the next world. Uh, and of course, pathway assessment, this is part of our school improvement plan, a hundred percent of our students passed C N A tests, which we talked about earlier. Uh, food and nutrition, that's a big area with Ms. Blank, they love going to cooking class, 'cause you know that's all about, we, we've been at that, but eighty-five percent of our students took it, and then also ACT, ACT Mac, we gotta do a better job of making sure students do more, 'cause our students look at, you know, ACT Mac as farming, different that, but there's a whole array of opportunities with our ACT program. Fort Valley does a good job of partnering with us, I've been speaking with, uh, Ms. Ford, and she wants to do more in that arena as it relates to ACT Mac. So we're just gonna grow that capacity, expose our kids the way they want to go, and just see where it goes from there, but ACT Mac's the area we gotta work in. And also, just with me being a veteran leader, just pushing the initiative that students have to take, you know, if you complete a pathway, you need to take a test to, to show, you know, show what you learned from it, and also just taking the time to put it on the scale, it's kind of like E O C testing, uh, we're gonna do that with our intercourse pathway assessment, just to, to focus and highlight what, what's best, uh, for those areas, so, so that's one of the things we want. Uh, as far as C T A goes, we speak of going into next year with Ms. Jordan, all pathways be mentored, administered, um, in the quick pathway assessment, we're looking to do that first semester in November, second semester in April, um, that career technical student organizations, I've just tapped into his website, I mean, it taps into every single thing, a student needs in order to be prepared for secondary, they can go to conferences, competitions, meetings, leadership opportunities, a whole array of things in that, and also revamp our four, uh, criteria, uh, we do need to have a ceremony just for course, because this year's students really, really, really question we the most ever about their course, and it's a show-off, you know, I mean, you get a graduation back five or six courses, it's a show-off. So we're gonna do a better job of making sure, uh, we have a course ceremony for those students and, and spotlight them for their achievements, because they did complete that, and we want to love them, and that's coming straight from the senior class, want to have that. Also, implementation of having student of the year, C T A student of the year, and also attorney counting, you know, C T A student of the year, that's something big, but once again, it's the rule we're going to prosecute, and also creating, like I said, under sniper, you talked about, the students. Uh, year review, all right, um, this is my fifth year at Turner County High School, and this is about for the biggest class that we graduated. I did look back, and I did see a class pretty, pretty similar to sixteen, seventeen school year, but, uh, but we graduated eighty-three students, and that's kudos to this journey here, and our team making sure we hold them accountable for being the greatest of the year, on success for the year. Uh, biology, we're talking about the E O C test scores, a pretty fifteen percent, uh, we revamped our, uh, Bridgeville, and, and you guys, and I know this is probably what not, you want, what, what you're supposed to do as it relates to physical meetings, you're supposed to bring the parent in and have those conversations with the student in the parent. But what we've learned is that sometimes those conversations are not as crisp, or that it's genuine when you bring the parent in the room, so what we decided to do is, a month before Bridgeville, meet with the student and ask them what they want, but, but, but between that conversation, we have the, we have the, uh, U Science data to help drive that conversation. So once we had that conversation about what they wanted to, we bring the parents in on Bridgeville day, and we have those kinds of conversations about when we're, when post-secondary. So that's kind of the revamp of Bridgeville when I talk about that. A hundred percent of our students took the intercourse pathway, we talked about that, efficiency and AIDS, uh, thirty-nine students who took the intercourse pathway, eighty-five percent in a surface safety, and also increased participation in annual signing day. And I don't know if you guys attended, but that was, that was, we had over fifty percent of our seniors participating in that, whether they, uh, signed up to go over to A West, kind of go into construction, or whether they got a job down at, uh, John Deere to get training, or whether they signed with college, or, or whatever, maybe military, we, we gave them opportunity to sign, and they, and they really enjoyed that. And our underclassmen, a couple of them came to me after this, and they said, Miss, I will be on this for a month and a year. So that's something that we do a really good job on. And then the last thing, this would improve, we're investing ten times this year, and that's for sure. Okay, uh, next step, going into next year, we broke it down, we're keeping the same school improvement goals, uh, content mastery, that's that student achievement until one instruction, teacher development, and that's gonna lead right into having those two instructional coaches in those areas, they're gonna have roughly six teachers per coach, and, uh, I know that's gonna grow that capacity as it relates to till-one instruction. Also having multiple teachers of E O C, E O C test courses, that's gonna be a plus for us, increasing that intensive mastery, and also those Titan walkthroughs, teach observations, just that kind of, kind of ability. And when we been at the high school, I'm all over the place, so next year, going in, I'm putting it on my schedule today, I'm going in visiting classrooms, to keep me accountable for going in, 'cause I could have did a better job this year, we're going in, still a teacher doing in the classroom, so that's gonna be big, what's making sure, honing on the walkthrough and the teach observations, and those teachers that truly affect, they need to be successful. Uh, C T A, we're gonna keep that, uh, school improvement plan going, we're gonna keep that U Science data, individual Bridgeville meetings, we just talked about, and then scheduling E O P As in November and April. And then the last thing, attendance, that's students and staff attendance, uh, we're having mentors for both, uh, providing incentives, uh, just for both, and just mainly just raising awareness to students and staff attendance as well. You have any questions?
I just, uh, all of it with that, it was impressive just how much work's already been done this school year in the last, you know, eight, nine weeks, and I can say that we are more than prepared for this next school year. Um, not only are we going to make sure that if students can attain those numbers, that they can have achievement, you know, rates at that level with cell phones and everything in their hand, imagine what they're gonna be able to do next year when they can actually focus on instruction, being a hundred percent engaged, and we definitely are going to do some improvements in that area. Um, in order for teachers to work at the level that they need to work at, and be able to perform with the resources that they need, we're gonna have Teacher Academy, that would be offered three days prior to pre-planning, so that would be them that intensive professional development need to be able to achieve all these skills, but, um, we are very excited about this next year. Y'all have any additional questions? And we'll pitch more data as it comes in.
Would you take your review of the rest of the items under information, I haven't too full?
Okay, we already talked about the leader in need, uh, program, but if you have questions about that, and elaborate on that more, that's our character ed program, that'll be basically with plus-team P B I S, um, will still be the deal to restore the practices, social emotional learning, mental health will still be a focus, it'll just be using that during the year. Uh, the district newsletter we talked about, I can say that I'm excited about the format and template and what it's already looking like, excited to be able to celebrate the things that we do in the classrooms and schools so that everyone can see, I guess, the bases that are in the building. Uh, the website has been updated, you'll probably already see changes, you'll see some things that are new that weren't there before, and that will be something that's just constantly alarming, and as we update new information on that, I'll update you when we've added, you know, sections, or, or, you know, replaced plans, or, or make sure that we have everything that's there, to put our best foot forward so that the community sees all the great things going on in real time. The strategic planning process, um, through G S B A last week, we were able to actually set some dates and times, and I think it was my understanding that, um, Lenita and Steve will be getting back to us this week to confirm that July twenty-second date, so I think tentatively, July twenty-second, that afternoon, that Monday, is when we will kick off the strategic planning process for the next five years of strategic planning. And, um, and then once that kicks off on July twenty-second, it'll move at a pretty fast pace, uh, October, August through October, um, and then by November, December, we'll have those action plans in place, we'll make sure the performance measures align so that January, we can be on track to possibly have that strategic plan open. Teacher Academy I just mentioned, um, I provided all the dates, uh, last Monday for the Teacher Academy and the New Teacher Orientation, Open House, and Convocation, so if you have any additional questions, I can give you more information, but we hope that you have those dates and times in your calendar, and you try to join us. And, um, we did close the Director Maintenance position, did a schedule to close this past Friday, June the seventh, so we'll now start reviewing, and I'm deciding what we're gonna do as far as next steps, we've got part three, I hope we need to, pretty close it somewhere else, I'm gonna back up, so I'll keep you updated. I think that's all about that.
Anything else to come, please? Let's do a German, we need to say it from, from Frank, I'll take it.